And welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in their business meeting, October 22nd, 2015. I'll ask our county administrator, Mr. Crepp, to take the role.
Good morning, commissioners. We are joined this morning with County Council Steven Madcor and our clerk of the board, Mary Rathke. So let me start the role. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Commissioners Bernard and Savis are excused. Please join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crepp, the first thing on the agenda is we're going to have a presentation.
Yes, we have a presentation on Ebola planning, and I would like to invite Dr. Sarah Present and Dr. Doug Lyon up to the front table here.
Dr. Present, again, she's present, right?
Yes, twice in one week.
Yeah.
Oh, good morning, Chair Ludlow. Good morning, commissioners. I want to thank you very much for once again inviting public health to come and speak to you. Today's presentation will be focusing on the recent ongoing Ebola outbreak in West Africa and how it has affected us in Clackamas County. And I'm going to wait for just a moment for the slides to show up, if that's all right. Okay, thank you. So first, a little bit of background on Ebola virus disease. The first known outbreak of Ebola was in 1976 in what is now known as the Democratic Republic of Congo. There have been a number of limited outbreaks since that time, all further east in Central Africa, and none with over 500 known human cases. It is a viral hemorrhagic fever causing severe illness in which 50 to 90 percent of those infected die. The 2014 Ebola outbreak is the largest in history, and I apologize, my numbers up there are incorrect. They are the numbers of just two of the countries that still have ongoing transmission of Ebola. The actual numbers as of October 18th were there about 28,500 cases and 11,300 deaths from this outbreak. Mostly has been focused in Guinea, Sierra Leone, and Liberia. There have been no cases in Oregon. Currently Liberia is Ebola-free, and there's good news in both Sierra Leone and Guinea. There have been less than five cases reported per week for the last 12 weeks, so things are definitely looking up, but it has been a very large outbreak that has taught us a lot around the world. Individuals traveling from Sierra Leone and Guinea are still undergoing airport screenings and active monitoring upon arriving to the United States. Liberia is no longer required to have monitoring. So in Clackamas County, we worked with our regional partners to take precautions to this emerging threat. Even prior to the first case in the United States, public health was part of regional planning efforts that included our hospitals and emergency medical partners focused on clarifying and coordinating plans across disciplines to be prepared for a case of Ebola or other emerging infectious diseases such as MERS or reemerging measles. There have been many valuable lessons that have been learned from this unprecedented outbreak. It's made us and our partners in healthcare and emergency services all make some major adjustments in our thinking about the care that we provide to include clarity on including larger systems of care outside of our own departments and our organizations. It's truly taken a joint effort of the entire globe from West Africa to Oregon City to put together common understanding across disciplines and across the community of what the risk is, of who's at risk, and how do we provide timely patient care that includes safe transportation, protection of healthcare workers, and maintains quality of patient care. In many ways, we're in response mode throughout this outbreak, solving problems in real time, but at the same time, we've been laying down a groundwork of planning that we'll be able to use far into the future to address new public health threats that may arise. A lot of work has been done in a short period of time, and many in our community have stepped up in ways not previously imagined. It's been truly an amazing effort in our community. Public health, as you can see on your slide, we did stand up the Department Emergency Operations Center at a low level with support and assistance from emergency management, and we worked with PGA staff to develop our communications. We also monitored 24 travelers from the affected West African countries staying or living in Clackamas County. Part of our planning process included the health monitoring of these travelers coming back to Clackamas County who may have been exposed to Ebola. With direction from the CDC and Oregon Health Authority, Clackamas County Public Health developed our individualized county monitoring protocols that included twice daily temperature and symptom checks for 21 days after the last potential exposure to monitor for early signs of Ebola virus disease. In the case of illness, public health is the first contact for a person under monitoring, and we would work with them to coordinate the next steps for their evaluation and care in a safe manner. So now, I have the pleasure to turn it over to Dr. Doug Lyon. He is a Clackamas County resident. He is a family physician and an epidemiologist who has worked with Doctors Without Borders and the CDC. He's currently practicing family physician at Virginia Garcia. And he has had the pleasure of being one of our people under monitoring, and he will now share with you his experience from treating Ebola patients in West Africa and coming home.
Chairman Ludlow, commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. I'm just delighted to be here. As a family physician epidemiologist, I've, I can speak from three different perspectives, really. One is that of a clinician. The other is a resident of Clackamas County. I've been a resident for some 15 years now, and an epidemiologist that has worked on state and federal programs both nationally and internationally. And I guess the last, maybe there's even a fourth perspective, which is being a person of concern or a person under monitoring, which when I came back from this Ebola epidemic. The way that Ebola is stopped is catching it early, looking at those that might have an exposure of some sort or some level, and making sure that if they develop symptoms, that you quickly get them isolated. And although coming back from Sierra Leone and working in Ebola, the chance that any one person will come back with an infection is very, very, very small, stopping the spread in a developed country depends on recognizing that one case out of the hundreds. And the, maybe the most difficult part of that is for county public health folks, state and federal folks, is doing it in a way that's respectful, not overly invasive, yet protects public health. I got the opportunity to write a nice letter, and I quite enjoy writing these sorts of letters. When you like see government and officials and systems working well, I think it's important to take a moment and pause and let people know that. And I thought that from these four different perspectives, when I came back and was waiting out my 21 days here up on Mount Hood near Welchess in Clackamas County, I thought I just got the best treatment from the county public health folks. They called me a couple times a day. They would always have something funny to say. They would ask me not only like, "What is your temperature and do you have any symptoms?" But they, they had that sense of humor and concern and thoroughness that this initiative to pick up that one case out of hundreds will take. So I'd say kudos to your public health folks. I do have a few pictures from Sierra Leone. I thought this might be a little bit interesting for you all to see. I just have four. I have dozens, but I thought this might be a bit interesting. Which button is I pushed? Okay, here we go. This is an Ebola treatment center or Ebola management center run by the group Doctors Without Borders in Bo in Sierra Leone. It was the biggest facility at the time, one year ago. And this is a picture of a staff member undressing from their personal protective equipment. We, in treating cases of Ebola, we would have to maintain folks under a very strict isolation. Any contact that we had in the course of clinical care, we would have to be dressed up in suits like this and go through a very rigorous field-based decontamination process. This is one of my favorite slides, and people ask, "Well, so Dr. Lyon, what was that like? Don't people die from Ebola? Weren't you kind of worried something was going to happen to you? And what was the organization you were working for? How did they look after all of you folks? How did you like spend a month under those conditions?" And it was like, you know, humans, I'm a believer, were quite resilient, and if you have a mission, and a mission that you feel is really important, especially something like this of such global importance, you know, people do well if you don't keep them there too long. MSF also sent a clinical psychologist along with us, our team of 30 that were in Kilaunua in Sierra Leone, and I thought this was kind of one of the, he had a little bit of trouble finding enough business, and so he put this little card together and posted it all around. "Do you feel stressed, tired, anxious, overwhelmed, sad, and want to talk about it? Do you want someone outside of the project and something confidential called Kenneth?" And Kenneth became kind of one of my good friends there. Everywhere you went throughout Sierra Leone, every 10, 15 miles on any road, you'd get stopped by public health officials that had this thing that looks a little bit like a gun, but it's actually a temperature, infrared temperature monitor that they would point at your forehead and screen people for fever. Anyone that had a fever would be isolated and taken to an area where they couldn't infect anyone else. They'd be tested twice within a 48-hour period of time. And I guess that's it for my slides. But I just wanted to, I thought it was important to take a day off work, actually, and to have taken a couple hours to write the letter the day that I did some months ago to express my gratitude for the work of the county public health department and to recognize their professionalism. And not only that, they were, I kind of looked forward to the calls every day. It wasn't a burden of any sort, so to be a person of concern or a person under monitoring, it was just a fine experience.
Commissioner Smith?
Dr. Lyon, thank you for your service and your willingness to go over to these parts unknown for a very dangerous service, and I'm glad to hear that our Dr. Present and our public health department was doing well. You know, my question I've always had through all of this, why are the outbreaks so large in these areas? Is it the way they live? So what makes this area special for the outbreaks?
Doctors Without Borders has been assisting in Ebola outbreaks. It's been the primary institution doing the on-the-ground work for the last 30 years. WHO, CDC, Ministry of Health recognizes an outbreak. They're the ones that have jumped in. Previous to this, all the outbreaks have been in very rural areas, and they've been quite small. And the thought is that the reservoir for Ebola is not a human reservoir, but it's in a mammalian species. The current thought at the top of the list, I believe they think it's bats. The more humans you have around, the less tropical forest you have, the rest you, the fewer, the lower the population of species that were, that would be the long-term hosts to Ebola. So these previous outbreaks have fortunately been in parts of Africa where the density and concentration of people and the presence of infrastructure has not been so great. This outbreak happened on the border between Guinea and Sierra Leone, and it happened among a tribal group that had populations living in all three countries. So when there was a death, that part of the world, they had this very traditional practice at a funeral of everyone washing and touching deceased person's body as a way to help them on their transition from, their spirit on the transition from one world to the next. And even in some communities, they would wash the body and give the water from the washing of the body to children. So if you can imagine, that happens at the junction of three countries where there's good infrastructure, and then they have relatives and connections, you know, throughout the whole region. So Ebola, they thought they had it just about well-controlled and isolated a year and a half ago in January and February. They weren't able to follow all of the case contacts, and then it started to pop up in the other countries. So it's, to answer your question specifically, it's because it's an area with much more infrastructure. It happened among an ethnic group that themselves crossed many borders where family members came to funerals from different countries, and they didn't have a good public health system to recognize kind of early infections. And then there's also the overlay of, you know, dual belief systems, you know, modern Western science and a very spiritual understanding of life and existence and disease. So if you don't understand what a virus is, it's a little hard sometimes to understand all our public health messaging. So it spread like wildfire.
Yeah, so my follow-up on that, do they still maintain these current religious practices about treating the dead people?
Well, I think this is, if you can imagine, you know, some of the practices that we all have, you know, how strongly some people feel about cremation or not cremation ceremonies that we have around things, and those things are really hard to change, especially if you don't have enough of an education in science for you to listen to someone's story and believe in them. And I think that the epidemic really turned around when folks had a personal or community experience of a death from Ebola, then people started to wake up and say, "Well, anyone that's ill, we don't touch them. We get them tested. Anyone that's sick, we don't traditionally do what we would do to reach out and care for our loved ones. We have to keep a safe distance." And certainly at funerals, we don't wash bodies anymore, but when someone dies, we call the public health officials, and they remove the body so that nobody's exposed.
So who is conducting the education efforts in this area of the world?
There are huge efforts led by national ministries of health, together with the World Health Organization, and considerable input from institutions like the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention.
Great. Thank you. Very interesting.
Commissioner Schrader.
Yes, I just also want to thank you for the work you do. So this is a zoonotic disease, zoonotic that is transmitted, was incubated in, they believe in fruit bats, and then gets transferred, it goes back and forth between the human population. So any contact in a rural area with one of the vectors is what causes the jump or potential jump from animal to human.
It's one of those needle-in-a-haystack things that just happens every once in a great, great while, because there's, you know, lots of contact between bats and, you know, mammalian species, you know, throughout Africa. It's just the right time, at the right place, the right vector, and the right level of exposure.
And it's an RNA strand, isn't it?
Yes, I'm like almost positively sure. I'd have to.
Okay. I was just wondering, because there's different, my understanding is that there are different strains.
I believe it's, if I remember, it's single-stranded RNA.
Yeah, well, how does the mechanism, I mean, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but I know the mechanism of a DNA-based, you know, pathogen is different than an RNA-based pathogen, and how it kind of goes in there and manipulates the cell coding so it causes the disease, and could you?
Yeah, I can speak.
I'm just curious.
A little more on the kind of public health response as opposed to the pathophysiology. You know, most of my work in Africa was, you know, the response and control. But I can talk a little bit about clinical course, which is quite fascinating, because there are so few diseases like Ebola where people get so sick so quickly. And one of the reasons why they believe hemorrhagic fevers aren't so common is when people get sick from a disease quickly, they die quickly, people recognize that those folks get isolated. If you think about some really good diseases, though, like tuberculosis or even malaria, gonorrhea, syphilis, chlamydia, people get the disease, they get a little bit sick, and they can stay a little bit sick for a long time, and a long time, they can pass it to a lot of other people. So the reason they don't think there are so many viruses around kind of like Ebola is throughout our history, our genetic history, we, those people die, they die quickly, and the reservoirs are very, very small. This one is kind of new and different because it comes from primarily an animal reservoir.
And there are other diseases, though, that have jumped from mammals to humans. This is just one of.
Correct.
Some of the flu viruses, I think from China also are zoonotic, are they not? And swine flu and things of that sort. As you said, this one's so virulent because it kills people quickly, and then it is a bodily fluid thing. I mean, so it's touching blood, it's touching a flu, and it's touching whatever that infects people.
It's quite a heartbreaking disease, and, you know, people describe it as kind of robbing folks of a bit of their humanity to others. And then, you know, when we have someone sick in our family or a friend, you want to reach out to them, you want to comfort them, you want to hold them, you want to be there, and you want to be present. You know, Ebola is so wicked in that you can't do that. And even in a country where there's Ebola, anyone suffering from malaria, from pneumonia, even from a complication of pregnancy, there's such fear and paranoia that people aren't able to do the normal human thing to reach out and comfort and provide care. You can imagine how hard it was trying to provide care to these very, very sick folks in that suit that you saw there on the screen. You know, two layers of gloves, these big ski goggles, these masks, you look like an alien.
Well, thank you. Not many people know I was a biologist by training before I got into this, so I was curious about the genome strains and how, how the actual, I can look up more on my own on that, but it's fascinating and heartbreaking, actually, to have people go through this. So, thank you.
Yes, doctors, both of you, thank you for sharing this. My son was flying through with the oil business into Sierra Leone during this, and he felt lucky to get on the plane because they were, as you were arriving at the airport, they were shooting your forehead with that instrument, and if you had a head cold, you were going to go someplace else than what you expected to go. So a great explanation. I'm glad you came through, okay? And thank you very much for your presentation today.
Very interesting. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have citizens communication and... Can you read that? I can't read this.
Thane.
Thane?
Thane? Thane, hi, Thane.
Come on up.
Sorry, we couldn't read your last name.
No, I'm cursed with small handwriting.
Okay.
It is small.
Someday, when my kids can read my journal and I can't read my own, that's when they'll get the last laugh, so. Thank you, Chair Ludlow, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Schrader. My name is Thane Eddington. I am the 2015 chair of the Stafford Hamlet. I want to express my gratitude to Gary Schmidt and Barbara Smolak, who have been helpful in supporting the hamlet, and also to some of you commissioners who have attended some of our meetings and been present for the outstanding input that we've received from our citizens. But just so that we're clear, the hamlet recognizes our position with the county. We are an advisory board. We are just the little hamlet here, and we recognize you make the big decisions.
Okay, we're the big hams. Now, that's a new one.
Hey, I was in 4H. I raise swine, so I have a fondness for these guys. But we want you to recognize that we understand who we are in the universe. Nonetheless, we have been very involved since 2006, as you may be aware, with the hamlet since it was formed, and our primary charter is to craft a community vision plan. We've been very grateful to Clackamas County in helping us do that over the years. I thought it might be helpful, can you hear me okay? Is that a little bit better?
Better.
Okay, thank you. I thought it'd be a little helpful here to review some of the progress and some of the citizen involvement since we were started. In 2006, we voted to become a hamlet. 347 people turned out for that vote, and it was a 92% approval to become a hamlet. In 2006, we voted on our bylaws. It was a similar decision process. We had 93% approval rating. Then back in 2009, we had the vision and value statement which was approved. Again, that was about 92% of the people over five acres approved of that, 84% under five. Then we get to 2014, and as we're poignantly aware, the cities of Westland and Tuaut and Sud Metro, and we got into the remand status. And so we did all we could to listen to our citizens. There are no bouncers at our doors. There's no one trying to disengage anyone from that process, but we do represent, we think, the most open and transparent citizen community board to represent the hamlet. And so as a result of the remand, we found ourselves in a different position, because we'd been doing our CVP based upon being in the urban reserve. With the remand, we went and had an advisory vote, and that advisory vote, basically after testing many scenarios, the advisor vote obviously was Borland in the urban reserve, north of the hamlet, undesignated. That passed by an 84 to 86% double majority between large and small landowners. This is difficult, to get this in three minutes. My apologies.
I'll let you stretch.
Okay, thank you, Chair Ludlow. Thank you very much. Then we have our CVP vote. CVP vote in 2015, the turnout for these under five acres was 88%.
Go ahead.
Over five was 85%. So there's a very consistent pattern of voting in the hamlet, very consistent pattern for voter engagement, which we're very proud of. With all due respect to time.
Go right ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow. We recognize there are many forces at play in the hamlet. We recognize that there are many different visions and competing scenarios for the hamlet. We also recognize that Clackamas County needs employment lands, right? Metro needs to accommodate growth. Again, as citizens of the hamlet, we're not planners. I'm an architect, and I own an equestrian business by profession. We have to, the only way that we can survive is to live in the county, and so we're really indebted to the zoning and codes that make that possible. But nonetheless, the reason why the CVP, so many of us have literally spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours in crafting is to find a way to give us a, if I may even say it this way, a short-term solution. Many of my neighbors are multi-generation in the hamlet. They were imposed with an EFU-80, an exclusive farm use zoning on their properties. That's not viable in the hamlet. We recognize that in the short term, is there a scenario where some of our neighbors can enjoy the lifestyle I do? Maybe have the opportunity to pass along some of the land to their kids, to their descendants? Not everyone's going to jump on that bandwagon, but we fully embrace and support employment lands. We fully embrace and understand what it means to project growth from the metro standpoint. However, if the north of the hamlet was to become undesignated, we have a soft spot for those that haven't been able to plan for their future. They've been caught, frankly, for decades in the back-and-forth discussions of the hamlet. And so it was with that kind of passion and that kind of fervor that, while I'm speaking very calmly, is represented behind the CVP. It was really the remand that got us in this position that we could really be talking about what that meant for these folks. So with that in mind, if there are any questions, I can...
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I love the notes. Really nice handwriting. I wish I could write like that, but...
I had to write big there. That took me some effort.
Yeah, architects can do that. One of your members forwarded to us this morning the article in the Westland newspaper about the vote, and a couple of things I want to ask you about. about the vote, and a couple of things I want to ask you about. The vote was two hundred and ninety-two votes in favor. No.
Oh, ma'am, no.
I was wondering if that was a misprint or misunderstanding based on what you showed me today. So, you're saying there was eighty-eight percent and eighty-five percent approval?
Commissioner Smith, yeah, good question. So, again, there's two categories, right? Under five acres, yes was two hundred and fifteen votes. Sorry, I'm getting away from the microphone here.
That's all right.
No was twenty-eight.
Okay.
When it's over-five category, yes was forty-five, no was nine.
Okay, well, I like that idea. I agree with you on the undesignated. I understand what these people have gone through in multi-generations owning eighty acres. You know, their kids can't even live next to them. And when I was in the legislature in 2000 through 2005, I worked on trying to pass a lot of these, what I thought were overly restrictive land use designations. I totally agree with that. I want to thank you guys for all the work that you've done on this. I certainly want you to have a seat at the table as we move forward on this. And maybe, I would like more information from you guys on what you presented to voters on your vision statement. I read your vision statement, I'm assuming it's the same one, back, when did you guys present that to us? You know what I'm talking about, back a long time ago. Yeah, okay, and just more on that, because I think there's a lot of common sense in it. And metro does need to listen to what we're trying to do in Clackamas County, they really do. And good luck on your future work.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, appreciate that.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, thanks for coming, Thane. We've had multiple conversations about this and about the possibilities there, and you know there is going to be a facilitated conversation, and I have felt very strongly that the work you've done needs to be part of that conversation as well. It's primarily with the cities at this point, because as you know, in the end, whatever happens is going to have to be an annexation from a willing city that wants to do it. And I think the fact that you have put all this work in and have, have these ways of looking at things is going to be part of that conversation. And I think, I can't speak for Commissioner Bernard, who isn't here today, but I would suspect he feels the same way as we go through, we go through this process. Metro, I always say about metro, you know, I always say, I don't love them, I don't hate them, but you gotta, gotta figure out where they're going to go with this. And that's a parallel track that seems to be moving ahead full speed. But in the end, I think this county will work with you, as well as the other stakeholders, to try and, as I've always said, make that a beautiful place with a rural-urban interface that is a showcase for how we do things right, not just in Oregon, but nationally. So, thanks for coming today.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Schrader.
Last week, we happened to mention the hamlet, and we got a smattering of emails, rather negative, saying that we had to learn to respect the hamlet. I didn't see any disrespect in anything we did. As, as has been acknowledged, we have a variety of people with a variety of interests that want to tell us what should happen there, forgetting, of course, that really, it doesn't matter what we say, it matters what metro says. Metro is currently addressing the transportation challenge, that coming from the court cases which you mentioned, both Tuaut and Westland. Lake Oswego is involved in the facilitated discussion that we will have, and, you know, after that, we will work with metro, try to figure out what to do with that property. But I, there's one word you didn't mention here today, and that is the compromise. And I thought that interesting, because that's been, was well-worked on by your group, and certainly it's a change from just the entire area, including north of the river, becoming urban growth, urban reserves. I don't know how that'll end up, and again, you know, Clackamas County, people seem to think we've got more power than what we do in this situation. Our IGA with metro puts them really in charge. They're holding these hearings, like I said, and we asked them, the three cities and this county, said, please do not hold these hearings, it's premature. They ignored us and went on with what they're doing. So, that, this kind of shows you about respect, does it not? So, you know, we look forward to some kind of resolution, and through this discussion and further discussions with metro in the coming months and even years, I hope there to be some predictability down there for the future.
Well, that is something that's been short supply, I think, in the hamlet, is predictability. So, we, we appreciate efforts to get them, to get us some predictability, as we've been in and out of urban reserves, now we've got lawsuits, and so, I hear you. And as far as the comments regarding last week, we are passionate, a lot of us, you know, we're all volunteer citizens. Again, my lifestyle's dependent upon the hamlet. The only place that my business can exist is in the county. I can't own an arena and five acres and five horses in the city. So, I, I have to come to you. I have, no city will, I can't go to Lake Oswego and build a riding, riding center. So, I wish you had more power, Chair Ludlow.
Yeah, well, some would say otherwise, but we won't get into that today.
There we go. But anyways, thank you so very much for hearing my comments unless there's any further questions.
Oh, Commissioner Schrader?
I just wanted to say, one of the reasons we formed, we did the hamlets and villages, because when we, because we saw that our community planning organizations, which were largely just based on land use, that people automatically, because it's in our DNA and RNA and, another biology reference, to self-govern and to move ahead with ideas. And what we, we didn't want to happen, because you are our constituents, is for the folks in the unincorporated areas not to, to have a voice with somebody, which is us. And it has been, occasionally, the cities have not been always happy with that. But as I always say to the cities, quite frankly, you are our citizens. We are here to represent you, and we did this with the intent of making sure that people weren't getting rolled over by the larger entities. Now, as far as designations go, I'm trying to think outside of the box a little bit about whether you, you know, I think rural, urban, really, to me, in the end, it's all going to be what the vision is, what a design is, and how anything happens there. And I'm beginning to worry that we get so caught up with a designation that we're not sitting out, and I think I've said this to you folks before, we're not thinking outside of the box about what urban, urban and rural interfaces really are, what they need, how you innovate so you can get the best of everything. And so, that, to me, is the exciting part of this. Now, again, you know, I guess metro's the big boy in the room, and, oh, who cares? I'm just like, it's metro, oh, well. You know, they, they really can't, they'll try and push us around, but they can't do that. Come on. I just kind of go in, just go in and smile and say, oh, how nice, nice, thank you for sharing.
That's not in my makeup, by the way.
In the end, I know it's not in your nature. My nature is, thank you for sharing, and in the end, we will do what we need to do for our citizens in that area, and they'll be okay with it. They'll get snarky, big deal. Oh, well.
Thane, another, while you're up here, you know, there's great contention about some people boycotting this vote. And, you know, I, they, they claim to be representing a pretty large group, but I'm sure you guys have worked out the numbers as to how many acres, for example, were represented by those who chose not to vote, to boycott. Got any idea about that?
Well, what's interesting, if you were to look at the voting record, right? Back in the day, when, shall we say, those that weren't actively engaged in the hamlet chose to be participants to an open process, the vote tallies were, you know, three seventy-four, three sixty-eight, some, you know, decent turnout of voters. Where we're at now, I think we've, having the 2014 vote and now this, the numbers are in the, you know, the, this was, for 2014, we had a total of three hundred and sixty-nine turnout. So, those numbers are on par with the initial formation of the hamlet. So, I can't speculate as to how many people are on, yes, on the non-participants, but I can say that those that do participate have done so in an open, transparent manner, and that there is a large contingency of large landowners that support this idea of not being under EFU restrictions at this point.
We could probably get that information. I imagine how many landowners there are. We probably have it someplace in our county files.
We do have it.
Yeah, we have it, and then just do the math to see how many participated.
Just so you're aware, here's, here are the people that signed in for, to take the vote, and it's split up by category. Here's literally the signatures we've been asked to present and to leave this here with the county, so...
Can you leave that other graph, too, the one you just had?
With the big writing on it?
No, the little writing, but I like your big writing.
Okay, there you go. I can leave both, you bet.
Thanks.
So, and the other piece of this, we are aware that there are individuals who are frustrated over this whole process, and those are some of the folks we've been hearing from, too. And, you know, again, I'm a great believer in peace in our time. There seems to be a breakdown, you know, you've got the Borland people, you've got the SLA people, you've got the hamlet. So, part of the reason why we wanted to do some, just at least get some kind of a forum for a discussion, is so we can start sorting this out. And the woman who was hired to do this is actually one of the best facilitators in the country, not just in Oregon, Deborah Nudelman. Getting her to help with this conversation that's going to move forward was a real coup for this county, and it's going to be, I don't see it as going to be an easy conversation, too. I think people will get really, you know, you're going to have upset people, but, you know, you know what they say, you know, stay calm and carry on, just, we're just going to have to work it through.
Commissioner, I appreciate that, because I've dealt with very different perspectives, and some don't agree with mine, so it's, again, I'm presenting the CVP, my vision might be different, but I'm here representing the...
You know, and our, and our job is to try and, we're the balance, the reason why we're the elected, I always like to think, is because we're trying to, our job is to try and find the balance, you know? And so, that's where I see this going. What's, what's the right balance, and how do we make sure people are heard? And when people, if people are upset and angry, how do you, how do you get them down to a level where, put that aside, let's just solve the problem, let's just figure it out, you know? So, it'll be, it'll be interesting. It's one of the reasons I love this county, I have to tell you.
I can tell you, I, in my happy world, we would all get on the same page with the cities and the county, and then present a unified message to metro, similar to, similar to what happened with the, shall we call it, the grand bargain in Washington County.
That's what we're hoping for.
I could imagine the unity with that single message would alleviate a lot of back-and-forth, like we've seen in the hamlet.
Do you intend to, for the hamlet to testify at the next metro hearing?
Is there a date?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, it is, it's November eighth.
Would you mind?
Yeah, it's really important.
Well, they had, they, you, they talked greatly about Stafford at the first hearing. I was surprised that, I didn't see any familiar faces there, but I, I think it would be appropriate that you would show up.
Dave Adams did, he was one of our board members, he did have a message at metro at our initial meeting. But, yeah, we definitely would appreciate the opportunity to be at the table.
All right. Thank you, Thane, well done. Mr. Crepp, we have a public hearing.
We do, and I'm going to invite Deidra Landon from the Department of Transportation and Development up to the dais. This is a public hearing to consider a resolution that would amend Appendix A of the fee schedule for Clackamas County. And in fact, what this is, is actually eliminating a couple of fee categories in the fee schedule. So, Deidra, go right ahead.
Thank you. My name, again, is Deidra Landon, Administrative Services Manager for the Department of Transportation and Development. In March of this year, we asked the board to adopt a utility inspection fee in anticipation of the passage of a Senate bill allowing counties to recoup costs associated with utilities using our right-of-way. Ultimately, the bill did not pass, so we are asking the board to repeal the fee from the adopted fee table. We are also asking the board to repeal a department-managed credit and debit card service fee. Our managing for results performance goals include improving our customer service and streamlining the permitting process for our customers. During the same meeting in March, DTD asked the board to adopt a card service fee so that we could meet our customers' needs by expanding the use of credit and debit cards in the department. Apparently, there are two options for collecting the service fee, a department-managed model and a bank-managed model. We originally requested the adoption of a department-managed fee. However, as we learned more about the collection process, we found that the department-managed model is cumbersome and confusing for both customers and staff, and it leaves opportunities for error. So, ultimately, we are going to implement a bank-managed model. Under either model, customers may choose another payment method and avoid the fee entirely. Because the county is not collecting the fee, we would not need to adopt a bank-managed fee into our code. So, we are requesting that the board repeal the DTD department-managed credit and debit card service fee. With that, if there are no questions regarding these two requests, we would respectfully recommend that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the resolution amending Appendix A fees of the Clackamas County Code to repeal the two fees.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you for being so sensitive to this topic, and it's a sensitivity to me on all these fees business. Now, I have a question. If I want to go pay my property tax bill, and I go in and I use my debit card, is there a fee? Does the county have to pay a fee on that?
The way the tax assessor, it's my understanding that the tax assessor also has a bank-managed model implemented, and so therefore, the customer pays a fee, but the tax assessor does not.
Okay, that's fine. User pays, I understand that. I think that's a good, a good, a good model, because we do have the option of writing a check or bringing in some, you know, a ba, a paper bag full of cash, I don't know. But thank you for that.
I find it interesting that we, as a county, cannot charge inspection fee or utility right-of-way fee, yet Oregon City does on us, a big bone of contention there. And I appreciate home rule and charter, but I, I don't think this particular one's going to go away. I think it's going to revisit the legislature over and over again, because we certainly talk about it down at the Association of Oregon Counties. So, I'm going to, unless commissioners have further questions, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Barb, you want to come up and, you know, we have a small audience today. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the resolution amending Appendix A fees of the Clackamas County Code to repeal the Department of Transportation and Development Utility Permit Inspection Fee and Credit Debit Card Department Managed Service Fee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Smith with the motion, Commissioner Schrader with the second. Any further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes three zero. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda.
Thank you, Deidra.
Thank you. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, we have approval of a revenue inter-agency agreement with Clackamas County Health Centers Division for the school-based health centers, building mental health capacity for Oregon City and Sandy High Schools, approval to apply for a grant renewal from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the HOPE One program, and, under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and that's it.
Wow, that's a short one.
It's a short one.
All right, commissioners, you want to remove any of those items? How about a motion?
Martha?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader with the motion, Commissioner Smith with the second. Any further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes three zero. And the county administrator's going to give us an update.
So, I've got, as I usually have, some good news about county operations and the good things county staff are doing. We did, just this last month, two of our staff members from the Community Solutions Division of our Health, Housing and Human Services Department were honored by the Oregon Employment and Training Association, which is a professional development group. They recognize Doug Van Zant and Kimber Galaspe for their exceptional dedication to work and for making significant contributions to their workforce team. So, thank you, Doug and Kimber, for that. We also learned that earlier this month, the National Association of County Community and Economic Development elected Chuck Robbins, who is our Director of the Housing and Community Development Division in H3S, as their Vice President. So, he's the National Vice President for the National Association. And of course, this is a reflection of Chuck's longtime service and his dedication to the profession, to the association, and to serving citizens. So, way to go, Chuck.
They can have to stick around for a few more years to get, to rise to presidency, so...
That, well, that's, that's part of the deal here, I think. We, we let him be Vice President, he becomes president, so we get to keep him.
Yep.
Yeah, nice.
And I'm also happy to report that our Housing and Rehabilitation Program has been recognized for its exemplary practice... uh, has been recognized for its exemplary practices earlier this month by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. They specifically identified, uh, the work that they do to estimate housing rehabilitation costs and for ensuring cost reasonableness. And that's a relatively, uh, rare accolade, uh, to receive from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So, congratulations to our, uh, staff who make up the Housing and Rehabilitation Program. And then, finally, just a couple of weeks ago, a number of county employees, uh, in support of, uh, the nonprofit we've created, the Social Services of Clackamas County, uh, conducted and participated in the Healing Heart Fun Rock, Fun Run Walk, uh, and, um, raised nine thousand dollars to, uh, support the work that, uh, Social Services of Clackamas County does to support volunteers that assist people in need, as well as providing funds to support Angels in the Outfield, which is an organization that assists, uh, children who may be affected by, uh, uh, domestic violence in their families. And I wanted to let you know, we had some twenty-seven county employees participate, uh, in the walk, where, with a total of about a hundred total participants, I personally committed that I would contribute ten dollars per employee who participated in the walk. So I, uh, wrote a check, uh, just yesterday to Social Services of Clackamas County, uh, in the amount of two hundred and seventy dollars in support of their work.
Hi, Don, thank you.
So I wanted to let you know that. Yes, yeah, good.
You just earned points.
Is that the conclusion of your excellent report? All right, we'll start, uh, Commissioners' communication with Commissioner Schrader.
Well, I'm gonna bring, uh, our update on the arts and culture activities in the county up first, to start with. This is something that, um, we've been trying to do to let people know what's been going on in the county. So, uh, Philip Foster Farm, Haunted Farm, Close Encounters with Characters from Eagle Creek's Past. And Foster Farm was, was the, uh, spot where people, as they were coming down from, uh, Mount Hood, you know, obviously the Oregon Trail. So it's one of our key spots on the Oregon Trail. Saturday, October fourth, sixty-eight p.m. at Philip Foster Farm in Eagle Creek. And then, uh, in Canby, there is the Michael Allen Harrison in concert, yeah, two p.m. free kids concert. Uh, if you've got nephews and nieces, Tootie, you know, want you and your daughter, go and bring, bring them to the concert, sounds fun. Uh, Sunday, October twenty-fifth, at the Dahlia Theater in Canby. And once again, if you want more information about any event, go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamisartsalliance.org, and, uh, it'll help you plan fun weekends with arts and, um, uh, heritage tourism in the, in the county at this point. I wanted to mention one other thing from, well, actually, a couple of things, sorry, Chair, I'm gonna try and go fast. I just wanted to, uh, remind folks that we do have, uh, an opportunity to work in education in two ways. One is workforce, but today we approved on our consent agenda, uh, intra-agency agreement with Clackamas County Health Centers Division for School-Based Health Centers, um, Building Mental Health Capacity for Oregon City and Sandy High Schools. And I recently had a, a town hall with Representative Lineger in Lake Oswego where we talked about, um, this is one of the services, uh, that we do for these health, uh, clinics. Uh, the, the kids like them, the teachers like them, um, the principals and the districts really feel this is added value in the school to make sure that our, our youngsters remain healthy, they can catch things early. And, um, again, I think that it is a wonderful service that we do, and if, if people don't think we have anything to do with education, actually, we do in a lot of different ways. Yesterday, uh, with my colleagues, um, who did a wonderful job, um, as we talked about business in the county, I think it was really well-attended, and I think, um, I think all of us had an opportunity to really contribute to the discussion. Um, and it was business in the county and questions from the North Clackamas Chamber that all of us fielded, uh, together as a team. But there was one thing I didn't get a chance to talk about, and I wanted to mention it because I think it is important for business in the county. And I wanted to let folks know that we are a member of the Pacific Northwest Manufacturing Partnership. It is a, a national program, it's a federal program, uh, it's come together with sixteen counties in the Bay State region, and basically, uh, it's identified key technology and supply chain sectors for material science, um, science for advanced manufacturing. One of the most, um, intriguing things is this new notion of the production of cross-laminated timber. And our own Gary Barth actually went to DC this week to attend a conference on this man, manufacturing partnership, and what, um, what this new emerging cross-laminated timber product would mean for our region, because, um, a year ago, we also had the White House here with their rural, uh, economic development folks, and they, they were touting this. But the one problem we have is, um, supply. So, on one hand, we are looking at cross-laminated timber as a new emerging technology that's being recognized at the national level, but the message has to get out to the national level and to our federal delegation and to folks here locally, that the supply chain should be here in Oregon. We have the resources, we have, uh, the opportunity, we need to have access to our federal timber because we do it right. There is not anyone I've ever met that has worked in this particular industry that has not really, um, logged in an environmentally sensitive, appropriate way. And we could be a national and international leader, um, in this advanced wood product manufacturing, um, arena. So, um, I hope my colleagues will join me, but I, I think that this is something we need to push for with our delegation. And I think we need to remind Doug McKillop from the White House, who is, uh, President Obama's designee, that he is so excited about this, but that's great, but it's also about supply, and that disconnect about supply needs to be rectified so we can be prosperous here locally in this new arena. So, I'm off my soapbox now, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I've been absent for the last two weeks, and I want to thank my, uh, fellow commissioners for filling in for me. Uh, my mother passed on October fifth, and that was quite a trying experience, and everybody was so kind and so wonderful here at the county, uh, with that. And one of the last conversations that I had with Mom, uh, I had just returned from Washington DC to lobby for the Lamont Falls locks, and she was always really interested in what we were doing on the locks, as she grew up in Oregon City area and was familiar with it. Well, I have very good news that was presented last night at the, uh, Partners Meeting, is, um, our pilot project, uh, for the, um, Falls, uh, locks has been accepted by the Corps of Engineers. We are number three on the list nationally to implement this pilot project. There are only two ahead of us. The reason those two projects are ahead of us is because they have a transfer E. They already have identified where the ownership of their locks will go. Uh, and this is a pilot project for the study. We need to implement a study to see the condition, economic development, environmental things. And in this project, the, um, the Corps said, "We will pay the five hundred thousand dollars to do this." That is a very big deal. And they're going to put it in the President, President's Budget for two thousand sixteen and seventeen. And this is very, very timely, as our state task force will meet for the first time this January. And at that task force meeting, we hope to identify what to do beyond this. I have plans, our group is so wonderful, we are like a think tank, there is so much knowledge and motivation in that room, ideas were just flying around. Uh, when I went back to DC and I presented, uh, the project to, uh, Juliet Rosa, I was able to take the booklet from the Lamont Falls Legacy Project with all those wonderful pictures. And at the time, she said, "Oh, my gosh." She says, "You know, I bet you that you could get credit towards the locks with all the work that's been done on this." And I explained to her all the millions of dollars that the state has put in, Metro, the county, the city. And so, I don't know how they arrived at getting us on this list at number three, but I don't care. I'm just jumping for joy. It still will take a couple of years, but it is far further along than it has been in the last ten years, and I'm just pleased as punch. And, uh, and I haven't had a chance to tell the board, but I would like the board to be briefed on it soon, because it is gonna require a signing of an MOU, MOA, uh, that the Corps requires. So that's just really exciting for me. So there you go, Mom. Okay, we attended, um, the Business of the County, answering hard questions and easy questions, most of them were hard, but I was told afterwards, they really enjoyed our answers and said we actually used humor, which, oh, my gosh, how dare we do that? Martha, talking about your supply for these wonderful cross-laminated, uh, boards, uh, the Bureau of Land Management is considering a forest thinning density management project in the Cascade areas called Hole-in-the-Road Project, just located out of the Molalla watershed, twenty miles southeast of the city of the Molalla in Clackamas County. So, um, BLM is, uh, at least listening to our thinning and density problems that create so much forest fires.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, because I have it right here.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, yay.
And the other one that you probably have on your desk as well, as you know, our Pitt Thirty-Six fire that happened last year, uh, about five thousand five hundred acres were burned, three thousand eight hundred acres, the majority of that burned is in the Mount Hood National Forest. They are considering, uh, tree removal and rehabilitation opportunities for the burned timber. And you can take burned timber and log it and mill it, and it is good, but it can't sit on the ground too long, because, uh, technically, the decay starts real soon after a fire. So hopefully, we'll be able to do some salvage logging on that site as well, and maybe we can get some of those boards on this project. Wouldn't that be fun?
And since there's three of us, I'm sorry, the poor chair, you're sitting in the middle, we're just talking, and, anyway...
I'm controlled by the women here.
Yes, oh, well, no, and, um, actually, one of the things that I think is very interesting about this right now, I think there is only one CLT producer in Riddle. So the other piece that they want to do with this manufacturing partnership is to, uh, look at, how do we get more of those, those kinds of processing, uh, pieces going here in this county? I mean, you and I have both toured, um, logging, you know, lumber places, and there's some that are highly modernized with computer technology, and others, it's a little bit more, you know, kind of like the, uh, a little bit more, uh, labor-intensive. Um, but this is, this is a really new industry, and so part of that is going to be to investigate, where do they locate, uh, what technologies do they use, and how do we become a leader in this, in this county? So it's really exciting.
It is very exciting, so maybe we can piggyback on some of this. Now, the best for last. This is May and Nyssa. They are tiny little ladies seeking a home for their retirement years. They are quiet and calm and love to, love curling up in a cozy bed or lap. Each of these ladies will fit right into your home and find a place in your heart. They even sleep together, and they like to stay in the same crate together, so the thinking is they need to be adopted together. If I didn't have one, I'd be bringing them home. For more information about Nay and Nyssa and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at five oh three six five five eight six two eight, or go to clackamas.us/dogs. And that's, I'm ended.
The twins.
Aren't you just loving this today?
Uh, as was mentioned, the North Clackamas Chamber event, Business in the County, was, was really, uh, good yesterday. Uh, I would probably maybe recommend in the future that, um, we get more audience questions, though, I appreciate that the questions were pre-prepared, but the, the, uh, audience, I think, was ready to ask some very interesting questions, so we can look forward to working with the North Clackamas Chamber on that. Yesterday, the Sheriff's Department Coordination, Nationwide Coordination, went out and served warrants on, on people, predominantly men, let's face it, who are, who they want for domestic violence. And I think this is a great thing for them to participate in. They have literally picked up thousands, eleven thousand, I think, since they've been doing this, of people that shouldn't be out there and should pay their dues in regards to their crime. Um, the, uh, I'll mention the town hall here in a little while. Uh, I think it's important that, that people know that we have businesses we do here in the business meeting, but the majority of business that we do is in policy sessions. Those are on Tuesdays. So those of you who have access to a computer, you can simply go to our Tuesday policy sessions, you can see the agenda, you can see, uh, attached material, and then, just, thank you, Mary, and just simply click on it to hear the video, um, or the audio. The, and what's interesting is, you, you can pick out which item you want. It's not that you're stuck for, uh, the three hours we might operate in the morning, you can pick which one you want and listen to just that audio. This was a very busy week, this Tuesday, I think. I was very proud of our commission for getting through a ton of work in a very timely manner. So, just a, uh, just a reminder for people that we conduct a lot of business on Tuesdays, and probably less business on Thursdays today. Uh, we decided to, uh, reinstate the Waymaster Program, um, to, uh, to give it a chance to recover from the tragedy, uh, several years ago, when the murder of Grady Waxenfelter occurred. And they did get the perpetrator, he's down in California, he was a bad boy down there too, so he's gonna go on trial there. Then he's gonna be transferred up here. I got a, a strong suspicion with his activities in California, as well as here, he'll be in jail for the rest of his life, which he certainly deserves. Um, in our policy sessions, we also, and this is an important, um, decision, we decided that the question of capacity, which we brought up and initiated, uh, an acceleration of, of the purchase of digesters, so we can handle more capacity at our Oregon City Sewerage Plant, uh, should be separated from Oregon City's cry that we somehow need new governance, somehow we have not been good stewards of the patrons' money in this district, in both districts, I might add, but let's just call it Tri-Cities, and separate those two. And we've decided that we would send the question of governance, uh, since some, not all, have decided that there needs to be that analysis, we sent it to Oregon Solutions, um, or Oregon Consensus, as it's known as. Um, this is a great way to do it, because it, it separates he said, she said, aggregates the information and the facts, and gathers everybody at the table. Now, I certainly hope, since, uh, by the way, we, we, uh, upon the recommendation of West Lynn, said, "Why don't we all meet around the table and talk about this?" And Oregon City refused. Now, um, Oregon City's gonna have another opportunity, as well as Gladstone, to step up, come to the table, and work out any difficulties we may have for the benefit of our, our residents. You know, um, it, it is very important that, uh, for the growth of this county, let alone sustaining what we have here, both residential, commercial, industrial, that when, when you want to grow a little bit, that you can, and there isn't a moratorium. Oregon City has three, I think four, actually, moratoriums of their own on sewer. We have none, and I'm very proud of that. In addition to that, we had a report on Tuesday, um, from two of the water providers, along with Ernest Hayes, who is a policy coordinator here, uh, for the administration, and, uh, did a great job of telling us how water is setting out there, uh, because, as they say, until it starts raining, um, we're not hurting so much we would e, uh, even odd days. But one of the things they said that I think was so important, that, that consumption could be, uh, cut by thirty percent if people would not keep worrying about having a green lawn. Now, I, I took my, I have a great sprinkler system, but I, I disconnected it years ago. And I don't mind the brown lawn, I don't have to mow it as much either. Uh, but it, it really has made a difference in, in how much I pay. As the price of water, uh, that precious commodity can continue to go up, uh, people are gonna have to decide if they want the southwestern theme, uh, for their lawn or garden area, or if they want to continue throwing water on the lawn. Um, so, let's see, I think that was a, a good synopsis of what we did. And let me give you this. Unsung Hero. You know, sometimes it's the little things that make a big difference to our communities, and small altruistic actions by our neighbors make sometimes everything a little bit better, and show a shining example to all of what it means to be a good citizen. Now, this woman is obscure to a lot of people, probably, but her name is Margaret Stew, S.T.U.W.E. She's lived on the Clackamas River Drive for over fifty years. She formerly was employed with the DA's office. Typically, every morning, you'll see the eighty-three-year-old county resident wearing a Day-Glo vest and walking the narrow shoulders of the road, picking up litter. Surprisingly, folks like to trash that stretch of road. In any event, Margaret walks over twenty miles a week, every day but Sunday, picking up cans, bottles... up cans, bottles, and McDonald's wrappers. It's folks like Margaret that remind us all that stewardship of our community is a job for everyone. We thank her for her dedication and service, again, Margaret Stew.
Wow, that's something.
Isn't that sweet? All right, now, I'm going to announce the last one, folks, the last town hall this calendar year. The topic will be "To Honor, Utilize, Promote, and Invest in Our Natural Resources." The location is Welch's, most appropriately, the resort at the mountain, and the date is Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, at six P.M. So, if you want to come up there and talk about anything in regards to that, please do. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.